By well and septic. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on December 2, 2020. This is a new proceeding entirely from the earlier proceeding. And I have, I'll mark these exhibits. I guess petitioner's exhibit two is the survey. And usually it's one, but it's pre-marked as two, so we'll take that as the survey. And this is dated 10/29/20. So you want to offer the same survey as your hearing exhibit for tonight?
We offer the same exhibits, one through four, and then we'll be operating out of number five, which is a new exhibit.
Okay, so we have petition exhibit two, which is the survey. Petition is exhibit number one, is that the site plan?
Number one is the survey, number two is the site plan, number three is several photos, number four is a ADR hitman letter.
And what's this sewer service thing? We supposed to have that?
The sewer service up is for the purpose of the objection by the Department of Public Health saying that we need to check whether or not the septic system is working. Well, there is no septic system. There is a system where there's a single tank which was installed in 2000, and it services the property. It cleans the water.
All right, I'm sure no one's able to hear that except me. So I'm just trying to get exhibits. Let's hold on that. We have offered a petition as exhibit number one, which is the survey. Number two, which is the site plan. I don't see a difference between the two, but maybe that'll be pointed out. We have group exhibit three, which is a series of photos. Exhibit number four, which is a letter from a neighbor. And I have objections from the Village of Addison to this petition, and comments from the Health Department that say, due to the septic system and septic system expansion area, the rear stone area may need to be reduced. With that, can I ask you to step up to the microphone, sir? Identify yourself for the record, and then identify your witnesses. And everybody could be sworn in at the same time.
My name is Stanley New, spelled S.T.A.N.L.E.Y. The last name is Enes and Nancy, I.E.W. And my law offices are in Oak Brook, Illinois, and I represent the petitioner, Manuel Robles.
Could you, both of you, to the extent that you may answer questions or give testimony, would you all three stand and be sworn in?
Raise your right hands, please. You just solemnly swear affirm that testimony about to give at this clause now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God.
Okay, you can identify yourself when and if you testify. Mr. New, would you repeat the remarks that you said with respect to petitioner, with respect to the AWS sewer report, which has not been marked as an exhibit, but I presume you want to offer it as exhibit number four or five?
I thought it was pre-marked as exhibit number five.
Not, well, mine's not, but we'll take it as five, and then tell us what it's about.
Okay, that addresses the Department of Public Health letter, which indicated that they have a concern about the septic system. Well, there is no septic system, and there has not been, according to AWS, since 2000, when they installed the current tank.
Well, are you saying it's serviced by sewer?
No, it's a, it's a tank. I can describe what the, what it actually is.
Well, it's gotta be, okay, describe what it is.
I'm looking for my note, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Did the, did the members of the board have this exhibit?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't.
Yes, good you know.
This is John.
Okay, we'll send it to you. It's a dealer service report for the subject property. It talks about scheduled service. It's dated December 11, 2020. And it says, in effect, that he checked the service system. I don't know what this says. Extra light bulbs in the panel. Replaced a blower intake filter. Checked all components. Cleaned and wiped something interior. And blower housing with pad, with pad, I don't know. It's, it's difficult to read.
No, it's a, sorry to interrupt. It's required maintenance of the system. And as I was about to start, the system is called a brand name. It's called SYBR-AER. And feature of the system is that it's an entire process that takes place within a single tank. Water flow flows into the tank. A regenerative blower blows air to diffusers that depress, disperses the air. The process transfers oxygen throughout the system. The oxygen, which is dissolved in the water, provides an environmental conductive to growth of aerobatic bacteria. These bacteria can effectively consume the organic materials. After 20 hours of the aeration, the blower shuts off, and the system goes into three-hour setting cycle. After three hours, the cycle and the discharge pumps and the treatment and field are out of the thing. One hour later, the cycle regenerates itself. That's what that tank does.
And so it is self-contained and never leaches into the ground?
That is correct.
All right. So you're gonna have to take this up with the Health Department, because I'm sure you've heard the story about above my pay grade. Well, you're now above my pay grade. I have a comment from the Health Department that you're gonna have to resolve with the Health Department. But I understand generally your remarks that the Health Department's comment is not applicable because of the nature of the system. So now, before you start, let me remind you, we have a seven o'clock cutoff. I'll talk about public comment. Please remind me if I forget that at the end. And I'd like to understand the difference between the site plan and the survey, which are two separate exhibits.
The survey was prepared by a different entity, and it was submitted to the application only for the purpose to show where the stone is. The survey was a separate document prepared for the entire submittal.
Okay, so the difference is it's exhibit two, which is marked survey, which you offer as site plan, shows the stoned area.
Yes, by hand, correct.
Okay, great. So go right ahead and start your case.
What I'd like to do is go through the photos which you have, and they are, they should have been marked the last time we were here, one to seven. First photo is taken.
I'll let you go through the photos if you want, but you've gotta address the zoning standards and the conditional use standards and all of the information for conditional use.
Well, I, I will as I go through the photos.
Okay.
The first photo is taken from the berm looking westward, and as you can see, it's, does not obstruct any views, and, and is consistent with what the county is looking for. The second photo is taken from the street looking westward with the Caterpillar property in the background. The third photo is the berm taken from the street. What a photo is again from the street, but giving a wider perspective of how neat the property is and up to the entrance gate. The fifth photo is the back of the property showing where the grade all trucks and equipment are proposed and parked. The sixth photo is looking at the berm from the inside. The last photo, which is numbered seven, shows the north side of the back half of the lot. Now, what these photos illustrate is there's no impairment of the supply of light to the property. Their photos demonstrate that there is no additional hazard for fire, and certainly it will not diminish the value of the property. And my client will address that for a moment. Now, as to increased traffic congestion, my client has approximately eight trucks and pieces of equipment. Once the construction season starts, those trucks are no longer on the property and are stored at the job sites. The only time that they would come to the property is to be repaired. When the construction season ends, what happens is the trucks are parked for the entire winter time in one spot and do not affect anyone, and do not impair any public health, safety, or anything else of the property. Now, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Robles to describe the properties which are nearby or adjacent, which operate in the same or similar manner as what Mr. Robles is proposing.
Right, I thought we adopted this technique at the October hearing, but in order to expedite our presentation of cases, we take an offer of proof as to what a witness would say from the attorney, and then we ask the witness to confirm. If there's something that was not testified to in the offer of proof, then, you know, your witness can supplement that. But I suggest that you do that style, because it will probably speed things up. But if you want to do the other thing, I see it's only 6:15, so do whatever you like.
What I have already stated, Mr. Robles would testify to that if he were asked. In addition, similar properties going to the north, 3N374, 3N350, 3N334, 3N270, 3N464, and 3N414, all appear to be operating businesses the same or similar as to what Mr. Robles proposes.
Do you know the underlying zoning of those other properties?
I, yes, they're all residential. there is a building on the property right now, and the, it's a house, and the client intends to use the house as an office. There will be approximately two people in the office. Note, please note that the improvements that the client made to the existing house, painted the house, added lighting, added new garage doors, and overall changed the complexion of the property to be an improvement or an enhancement to everybody's property in the neighborhood.
Does anybody live at this residence now?
It is vacant right now.
Have you tried to market it as a residential property?
That is, he has not. His purpose is to use it for parking his vehicles and fixing his vehicles, which is a use consistent with all the properties to the north.
Okay, go right ahead, go right in, continue.
Now, I'm making no excuse for Mr. Robles that he shouldn't, he should have applied for a permit beforehand, but based on his review of the properties to the north, it appeared that everyone else is operating a commercial-type enterprise. What's important is how he improved the property and how it will, under the special use, how the property will be used in a very limited purpose. I will not give any congestion, will not be a hazard, and will blend in 100% with the other properties. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay, who's Mr. Robles? I noted you were sworn in. You heard the testimony from your attorney, which was offered as if you had given that testimony. Do you, would you agree with that testimony, sir? Was that testimony accurate?
Yes, it was accurate.
Okay. Well, then, you have to go up there.
While we're waiting, I want to indicate that. I just wanted to fill in, we, I want the property to store my equipment, we're not to, we do not do any repair whatsoever. We take it to a separate dealer to work on these machines, because they're all hydraulic, and you need special, special mechanics to work on it. It's only for parking.
I want to indicate to the members of the board and also to the petitioner's attorney that we are not adopting the record in the prior case as part of this case, because there was, the reason we have a follow-up hearing here is that the petitioner or the attorney indicated that he was not able to hear clearly the questions and answers, and so therefore there was some confusion. Generally, that means that the record in the earlier case may be a tainted record, so I cannot adopt that record as part of this case. So if there's anything else, sir, that you feel necessary that you added from the prior hearing, you should repeat that now. I don't know if there is or isn't, but I'm, I wanted to make that clarifying point.
There is not.
So does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Well, I'm not gonna ask any follow-up questions. This is Bloomingdale Township. It's close to Addison. Mr. Cutter, do you want to ask any questions?
Not based on the presentation, no.
Mr. Hakeem, let me ask you, because I can't see you, and I might forget you otherwise.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Moran?
At this point.
Dennis, do you have any questions?
No.
Who's this other? Oh, Mr. Murphy is here. Mr. Murphy, do you have any questions? Mr. Murphy indicates no questions. Ms. Anderson?
No questions.
Who's that? So there are no follow-up questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions, but I just, for the record, wanted to say I don't have any questions.
Oh, I forgot to call, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Trying to keep up with my open squares on the screen. And are there any members of the public that want to make a statement or ask a question about this petition?
I have brought a Dominic Pantano here.
Is that this gentleman?
Yes.
Hold on just a minute while we sanitize. All right, sir, would you tell us your name? Spell your last name for the court reporter.
Dominic Pantano, P-A-N-T-A-N-O.
Okay, we need your address, and then...
3N208 Rolling Road.
And where is that in relation to...
It's on the south, south of the property.
South side of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And you live there, sir?
Yes, on and off, put it this way.
Okay.
If you got six grandkids, you would understand it.
I have four, and they won't have me, so I'm stuck living by myself. All right, Mr. Pantano, go ahead. I will note for the record that you were sworn in.
I just want to make a comment that Mr. Robles made tremendous improvements to the property from the way it was and the way it is now. It really looks great. Looks fantastic. It makes the whole area really looking nice.
Okay, great. Any concluding remarks, Mr. New?
Just, I just want to offer an evidence exhibits one through five.
Yeah, we have them, we've accepted them all. They're all part of the record. And which one is this, three? The photos are three. That'll be group exhibit three. Okay, we're, our public hearing is closed for this...
Hold it, Bob. Bob, there is somebody that called in. I don't know if they want to speak or not.
I asked...
Do you see it on your icon?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is the realtor, who can testify as to what the adjacent properties are.
Well, are you calling another witness?
I am calling him as a witness, yes.
Well, call your, has to do the offer of proof, and then we'll have, he wasn't sworn in, I presume. Can you hear us, sir? What's his name?
All right, what about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we, Carlos?
Yeah, Carlos.
Were you sworn in?
No, I was not.
The petitioner closed his case and then decided that he needed to call you as a witness, so we're gonna reopen and have you called as a witness. So would you raise your hand and be sworn in?
Yes, sir.
You just solemnly swear affirm that testimony about to give at this clause now in our hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God.
Yeah.
What is your name and spell your name?
My name is Carlos Soria. First name C-A-R-L-O-S, last name S-O-R-I-A.
And what's your real estate company?
Smart Home Realty, based out of Wooddale, Illinois.
And what's your designation, sir? Are you broker?
I'm a real estate, I'm a broker, real estate broker, yes, sir.
All right, and what do you have to offer?
All right, I've been, you know, I've been working as a real estate broker for the past six years. During the previous two years, I've sold three properties, or four properties now as a listing agent in Addison, and helped sell a good six as a selling agent. But collectively, our brokerage office has helped sell 45, 45 properties within the last five years. So we have a decent market share in Addison, have a great understanding of the area. And when reviewing the property in question, 3N220 North Rowling Road, and considering whether modifications to the property and/or use type will impact values of homes located to the north, it's important to first understand how different the subject home is or will be compared to the adjacent or surrounding homes on the street for comparable analysis. For example, if the subject property, 3N220 North Rowling Road, was the only property on the street with a berm, trees, gravel roadway, and equipment located on the property detracting from the overall street curb appeal, an argument could be made that the home would be negatively impacting the surrounding or adjacent property values. However, conversely, if the surrounding or adjacent homes are modified and/or used in a similar manner to the subject property, which they are, the aforementioned notional argument would be negated. That being said, there are several properties located to the north that are modified and used in a similar fashion, as was previously mentioned by the attorney. Additionally, it is worth noting that the subject property and the adjacent properties are located directly adjacent to the Addison Industrial District, and therefore many of the backyards back in the industrial properties, and many face businesses across Route 53 or Rolling Road. Some of the adjacent properties set up in a similar manner, for record, just so you're aware. You have 3N270 North Rowling Road. They're actively operating a snow removal and salt business. 3N322 Rowling Road has heavy machinery in the driveway, bobcats and whatnot. Same with 3N334. They actually have bobcats, utility trailers, a berm setup, as most of these do. 3N414 is actually owned by a trust company, has heavy machinery on the property with a berm, and is actively building a large brick building towards the rear of the property. And then 3N468 North Rowling, or 3N468 Rowling Road is actually owned by Sun Valley Lawns and Snow, and operate a lawn and snow business out of that property. So in closing, it is my professional opinion that the subject property will not negatively impact any surrounding or adjacent property values. The property is located across the street from several businesses, as I previously mentioned, and backs into a property owned by Caterpillar, which is actively building. So to say that it's gonna detract or decrease curb appeal, it won't, as all the other ones are set up in a similar manner, and may I add that they're not even, if anything, some of the properties to the north, the way they're set up, are detracting from the property values in the area, as they're not set up in, in as nice fashion as the subject property, 3N220. As, as attorney previously mentioned, Mr. Robles has worked diligently to enhance the property's value by updating not only the interior but the exterior of the home with landscaping, repairing most, if not all, of the deficiencies identified during the initial home inspection. And is also, Mr. Dominic testified, I mean, he did a great job with the property. So if, if we were to relist the property, I mean, it would add towards the property value of the whole area, including the adjacent properties to the north. But that's all I have pending any questions.
Have you ever listed this property?
No, sir, not, not this property. I was, I helped purchase the property, so I was the selling agent on this property.
Do you know anything about the underlying zoning of the various properties that you mentioned?
They're all zoned the same, unless they've went for an exception and have been granted one, they should all be zoned residential.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. New?
Thank you for letting me reopen the case. This time I really conclude my case, that's nothing more.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me say for the record that we will close the hearing for this evening, but keep the record open for 15 days from tonight, today. The purpose of that is... The purpose of that is to elicit any public comment that may come to us. Public comment should be addressed by email or US mail to the county staff referring to this, county zoning staff referring to this case. And if by email, guess you wanted to, you or Paul or who? If by email, it should go to paulpaul.hoss@doPageco.org. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, and we'll take this case up next after the expiration of this 15-day period. At our February, our January recommendation is closed, and it's a little tight. So we'll take this up at our February recommendation meeting, which occurs at 5:30. It'll probably be a Zoom meeting at, it will be February 4 at 5:30. There's no further presentation by the petitioners at that time. Thank you. We go off the record.